Okay, I would entertain a motion to move out of order to a committee.
I move to amend the agenda to allow for ordinance 1824-2 to be considered at this point.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trusty Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trusty Seiden?
Yes.
Trusty Shapiro?
Yes.
Trusty Struthers?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Trusty Jester?
Yes.
All right, our rules for doing this is we will call you up as you have signed in, and if those of you who did not get to sign in and have something to say at the end of it, we will make sure that you have your opportunity as well. But I would ask that you give your name and address, because it must go in our minutes, and that will go in the record that will be with the state and will allow us to have a complete record of what was said tonight.
And Bob, if I may, I'd like to read the cover sheet that the village board has been presented for tonight, just to set the tone and provide some background information. The proposed ordinance would ban the possession, sale, and manufacture of assault weapons and large-capacity magazines in the village, and is based on the City of Highland Park ordinance that withstood a legal challenge. The proposed ordinance provides for an effective date 60 days after the ordinance goes into effect, and does not otherwise regulate or prohibit rifles, shotguns, pistols, or ammunition. Following first reading review at the March 19, 2018 Village Board meeting, the format of the proposed ordinance was modified to include all provisions of Article 11, Chapter 15 of the Deerfield municipal code pertaining to assault weapons. Proposed new language, as it was talked about previously, is underlined, and proposed language is deleted and is marked by a strike-through. Noting that the Highland Park municipal code does allow retired law enforcement officers to possess assault weapons and high-capacity magazines, a similar exemption was added to the proposed ordinance, including the requirement that they meet other applicable requirements and local safe storage regulations. I know myself, the village attorney, we're here to answer questions, as well as the police chief, but we're here to answer questions and be receptive to comments from the board as well as the ordinance.
Thank you, Ken. First name I have on the list is Dr. James B. Smith, Park Ridge, Illinois. Please, when you come up, just repeat your name and address so our recording secretary can take it. Use the microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am Dr. James B. Smith, living at 737 Forest View Avenue in Park Ridge. I've been dealing with this issue for as long as it has been an issue. At the time you were considering assault rifle regulation, we were dealing with it in Park Ridge. It showed up on the agenda for a committee of the whole meeting. Our attorney explained what it meant. One person spoke in favor of it, 10 people spoke against it, and at the end, the presiding officer looked around and said, "Anybody want to do anything with it?" Okay, next item on the agenda. A couple of days later, I went to Lincolnwood, which was also considering it, and I spoke there on what Park Ridge has done. And at the end, the president said, "Well, I need a motion on this." And one person said, "So moved." And the president then said, "I need a second." A second? Anybody a second? This dies for lack of a second. These were tremendously unpopular down in my area, and I was astonished to learn that there was one place, Highland Park, that would actually do it. I find it completely astonishing. I think the important thing to understand about it is that this is a civil rights issue. The proposals amount to harassment and discrimination against gun owners. This is oppression. This is putting your thumb on peoples and saying, "You are unworthy." This is bigotry. And I'm happy to say, we don't have any of that in Park Ridge. Gun owners are a persecuted minority. We have enemies out there, laying around like vipers, ready to strike. If there hadn't been a tragic incident in Parkland, Florida, the same people would have come along a few the next time there was a comparable tragedy. Who are our enemies? Well, the first is Michael Bloomberg and his stooges. Bloomberg is the fifth richest man in the United States, who spends his money indiscriminately on things that only he thinks are good ideas. And he has hired a lot of people under various organizations, like Every Town for Gun Safety, Moms Demand Action, et cetera. They're out there, they're paid, and they're getting money directly or indirectly from Bloomberg. Secondly, there are gullible bystanders who get caught up in the emotion of the situation, and not thinking very deeply about it. And third, there are the Russian internet trolls. Now, if you've read Mueller's indictment of the 13 Russians, you'll note that they have a pattern of infiltrating social media in the United States and doing it. Well, that is what they are doing now on the gun control issue. There is an online organization sponsored by the German Marshall Fund called Hamilton 68 that monitors this, and they are reporting that, yes, the Russian trolls are busy stirring up controversy whenever they can, as a means of disrupting American democracy.
Thirty seconds, please.
We have our choice of being stooges of Bloomberg, or being stooges of the Russians.
Thank you. All of these comments are, as I said, going in the records. I may not have emphasized that our rules require a five-minute speech, five-minute curfew. We will warn you at the end, or getting near the end. Next name on the list is Sylvia Renteria.
And I will provide you a 30-second time when we're getting close.
Hi, my name's Sylvia Renteria. I'm a resident of Highland Park, 1770, sorry, Blossom Court.
Thank you.
In Highland Park. Well, I read in the paper that those opposed to this ban...
Sorry? You.
Hmm?
That wasn't you, that was the previous speaker.
Technical difficulties, please proceed.
I read in the paper that this ban is going to turn law-abiding citizens into criminals. Well, I'm pretty sure law enforcement and ordinary citizens are much more concerned with turning law-abiding citizens into criminals when they have easy access to guns and decide to use them to vent their frustrations or to settle some scores. There's going to be lots of talk about Second Amendment rights, but I'd be hard-pressed to find any right that is completely unrestricted or exists in no context. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on the list is Joel Siegel.
Joel Siegel, I represent the JPFO. I am the Midwest and North Shore/North Suburban Coordinator, Jews for Preservation of Firearms Ownership.
We need a name and an address, too.
Yes, Lincolnwood, Illinois.
Street address?
Okay, 1811 Fargo, Lincolnwood, Illinois.
Thank you.
I got calls over the last number of days from members in Deerfield asking what we should do, what they should do if this ordinance passes. I told them, "Look at the 11th Commandment." Well, what is the 11th Commandment? Thou shalt not disarm the Jews. Think about it. Many of our members have had relatives, friends, acquaintances that have suffered gun control in Europe under fascist and Nazi regimes. We know what our history is. So my members asked, "What should we do?" I said, "There's an ancient and honorable American tradition called disobeying an unjust law." I have urged my members to think about their conscience, and if so moved, do not abide by this law or ordinance. We have a right under the Constitution and biblical rights to preserve our armed and lawful possession of these semi-automatic rifles. Why, all of a sudden, are you amending an ordinance, safe storage, which seemed to work, which did not bother anybody, and actually made some sense? Now you're creating a hornet's nest, for what reason? Does not make sense to myself or my members. So our position is civil disobedience. Unless your police force is willing to knock down doors at 3:00 in the morning, like they did in Europe from 1939 to 1945, civil disobedience is the only righteous answer to this unwise and unnecessary ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name on the list is Larry Nordahl.
Larry Nordahl, I live at 471 South Commons Court. I'm Larry Nordahl, I live at 12...
Drop the microphone just a bit, so that your... Yeah.
I live at 471 South Commons Court, here in Deerfield. I'm a 12-year resident. I want to say it was remarkable and astonishing to see the young people stand up last week and speak to the council. I don't think I've ever been to a board meeting where teenagers call local government board members courageous and heroic. However, it's only going to do pretty good on their college applications, since they don't vote. But it will serve them well in their families and in their classrooms. The ordinance to store and save firearms was only passed for one reason, that was to have an amendatory vehicle that could be used in the future for just this purpose. It only was here so that you could banish assorted firearms in the future. First, it's going to be assault rifles. Of course, people who loathe, hate, despise firearms are going to encourage new bans in the future, it's just a matter of time, and in the right political moment, the right political crisis. More bans are coming. What's the net effect of this? What really happens here? Well, people who make a living training, teaching, civilians who make a living training, teaching, and working on firearms are going to be forced to move or give up, surrender their careers. I think the village would be happy to see them move, so make more room for enlightened progressives. When they move, they may consider moving all the way out of the state to some wretched red state with the other deplorables. You are not welcome. Guns are icky. So you are contaminated, take them and leave. That's going to be the general approach, and you can expect to see that time and time again in the future. So what is the real political effect here? What's the real political effect of the gun ban? It castigates any lawful firearms owner, demonizes him, and allows the village to curate their voting public. They can chase the conservatives out of town and have right-minded, enlightened progressives to live in their space instead. So my view is that this is a new form of restrictive covenant coming from the left, instead of the 1950s restrictive covenants coming from the right. The net real effect is chasing voters that you don't agree with out of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Weissman.
I also would like to say that the village board has taken no action to chase voters out of town on the public record.
My name is Mike Weissman. I live at 2N125 Virginia, in unincorporated Glen Ellen. I don't live in Deerfield, but I'm on the board of Illinois State Rifle Association, and I have constituents who live in Deerfield. I'm here on behalf of them and behalf of gun owners all across Illinois. I know I've been here before. I'll be brief, I will not take five minutes, I'll take two minutes and 30 seconds. And in fact, I would offer that three minutes is probably more appropriate for this kind of activity. If you can't say it in three minutes, you can't say it in five. So I read the village ordinance, and it is a lot of, there's a lot of stuff in there, and this is going to take away, trample on the Second Amendment rights of your best citizens in the name of a sense of safety for other people that live here in Deerfield. I really appreciated the part where we talked about how the weapons that were going to be banned have been proven to have no efficiency in a well-regulated militia. I'm sure that a lot of research was done on that. So anyway, we're back here again, and this time you're going to vote on it, you're going to copy Highland Park. Highland Park did the heavy lifting on this. They have some more, they have more people than Deerfield, and they took it all the way to the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, and took it all the way to the Supreme Court, where it wasn't ruled on, but the fact that there was no ruling does not mean that it's a victory. But, and I hope that if Deerfield goes through, it goes forward with this thing, that they're ready to defend this ordinance vigorously, no matter what the cost to the taxpayers, that they're going to take this all the way, just like Highland Park did. I think we're forgetting the spirit of our Constitution, the spirit of the law, the Second Amendment, is not just a bunch of weasel words that mean that we don't have the right to keep our firearms, just because someone else thinks that they're scary. So we're ready to infringe on the rights of the voters, on the backs of the taxpayers. I'm sure that you've committed the money ahead of time to defend this, and if you want to make a statement, if this is all about making a statement for the, what the sign of the times or whatever, you've got our attention, you've got the attention of the media. Here we go. All the cameras are here. You are strengthening the resolve of gun owners to go ahead and make sure that we mount a vigorous offense to this kind of thing. So you're going to vote on this tonight. God bless the village board, and God bless the good people of Deerfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan Cox.
Hello, my name's Dan Cox. I'm from 593 West Galeton Drive. I'm Dan Cox, I'm from 593 West Galeton Drive, around Lake Illinois, and I am really upset with this board, the ludicrousness of this idea. I cannot believe the idea of which we come upon when a tragedy happens. A tragedy brought about because the school down in Florida, they didn't want to do anything about this boy that brought knives into school. No, no, we can't report him to the police. The school, they wouldn't report him after he took chairs and injured children and teachers. No, we can't report him to the police. And when he called the police and said, "I feel like I'm going out of my mind, and I have guns, and I'm thinking I'm going to do something bad," the police said, "Call the mental health facility, and they'll help you." When the family and health services individual went to the school and spoke to the security guard who was armed at the school in Coward County, he said, "I've got nothing to say to you, I don't want to put anything on the record, because then I'd be called into court." Here's what you need to be mad about, folks, and this is what we all need to be mad about: these officials that don't do their job. How do you expect the National Instant Criminal Background Check system to work when you tell your teachers and your school officials, "Go easy on the kids that are mentally ill"? When you have cops that want to stand outside the building and tell everybody, "Stay back" as the gunshots are going off? Yeah, it's real easy to say, "You don't need a gun." No, you don't need something to defend yourself against somebody who has perhaps a semi-automatic rifle. You don't need one to defend yourself with it, because we have police. Yeah, they had them in Florida, too. Imagine how those teachers and those kids felt as they look out that window at that cop hiding behind that tree. I bet they wished they had a gun versus a phone in their hand, because that phone is nothing more than something to cry in. Now, when you want to react to a tragedy, and you want to cede the rights of citizens, you are bureaucrats that Thomas Jefferson warned us about, those that will strike away your rights with the stroke of a pen, bureaucrats that have never had somebody after them with a gun, bureaucrats that have never understood being under threat, bureaucrats that haven't called the police and had to wait and wait and wait as the criminals in your house. When you want to disarm your citizens because you do not trust them, you go against everything that our Constitution is about. Freedom of speech, are we going to regulate that next? You don't like what someone says, like down in Berkeley, they attack you with tear grass, and you call that protesting. They burn things, they turn over cop cars, oh, that's protesting. Well, I'd like to protest against this stupid ordinance of which is being brought about by people who don't understand what it's like to be under threat. I'd like to ask, has any one of you served in the military?
I think several members of the village board have served in the military.
Who has served in the military?
You're addressing the board in general, not individuals, please.
Okay. Well, my question to you is, did any one of you come back from the military crazed and want to go attack somebody? Here's what we need to attack. We need to attack the mental health system in this country, and the giving out of drugs that cause psychological issues. The one thing that you can say was present in every single one of these school shootings was every single one of those individuals was on psychotic drugs, be it antidepressants or some other form. But nobody wants to talk about that, because Big Pharma has got big money. I don't hear you banning those drugs. I don't hear you banning school boards that allow little teenagers to attack people and not be brought to the police. Nobody wants to deal with the real problem.
30 seconds.
In London, England, we right now have more murders than in New York and LA combined. And guess what? Guns are banned in London, England. Isn't that something? But yet crazy people do bad things. In London, England, you have to have a registered license in order to get a butter knife. Yet people are being stabbed in London, England. Perhaps you need to think more about dealing with the crazy than dealing with the guns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Easterday.
Good evening, Daniel Easterday, 390 Wilmot Road, Deerfield, Illinois, begging the board's indulgence. I have spoken before, but there are two people that have reached out to me that, due to spring break concerns, asked me to come and present their concerns for them, as they cannot be here tonight. You guys know what my opinion is. Recently, within the last two weeks since the last board meeting, I've dug deep into the language and the intent of what's going on, and the two people that have asked me to speak here tonight have done so as well. There are concerns, especially in regards to the addition of the high-capacity magazine ban being added into an amendment that contains no language whatsoever about magazines. From a legal standpoint, I do not believe this to be the proper use of an amendment to a village ordinance. There have been several legal opinions that I have seen that would suggest that a very good case could be made against the way that this amendment is being used, and I would ask that the board seriously consider whether or not they want to commit the legal resources and the monetary resources to fight something like that. From my own personal opinion, which you guys know, I just want to say, in the past four weeks, I've been in the newspaper twice. My position is well-known. I've gotten some good comments from the community, and I've also gotten some really nasty and horrible comments from this community, walling about and about in public, including one tonight, where I was having a conversation with other people, and a resident spoke up and started interrupting me, and because I voiced my opinion, said, "This is my town, I don't want you here, get out. This is my room, get out of my room." This ordinance is causing this community to take sides needlessly. This ordinance will impact people that are active members of this community. We've heard the children speak about being free from fear. When you are educated, and when you take into consideration the things to be afraid of, we can beat fear. Banning an object or removing it from your presence doesn't solve the fear, it just puts it off. I heard a resident speak two weeks ago about anonymously calling in tips on people she believes would have an assault weapon, and hoping the police would come and search their house. Is this the community that we want to live in? Nothing has changed since this board, when I was president, voted for this amendment, or voted for this ordinance for safe storage and transportation. I would respectfully urge more consideration and a delay of the vote until all of the legalities of this situation be examined, and also the moral issues be examined as well, about what is happening in this community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. You may be assured that this board has calculated, has considered the various aspects, we have researched the legal aspects of it, we are moving toward what we believe is the best answer to this question, and that's what we will wind up doing. That's the discussion, sir.
That's it?
That's it. Francis Kowalik. And let me ask, because I have three Kowaliks listed here, are you speaking for all of them?
No, I will speak for myself, and I will be brief, as will my children.
Address, please.
I'm Francis Kowalik, I live at 1111 Osterman. I live at 1111 Ostroman. And I have spoken before, but I will be extraordinarily brief. I can't even get the village to afford to pave my street. I've lived here since 1995, last block of Ostroman before the creek. You know, my street looks like a gravel driveway. Yet, this village is willing to spend, like Highland Park did, ninety thousand bucks, at least, to take this up. Because you know it's gonna be opposed, and you know the Illinois State Rifle Association and other association of gun owners are going to be funding an opposition of this legally. My personal opinion, being a member of the bar for over thirty years, is that your grounds, your mandatory grounds for this particular ordinance are not nearly as rock-solid as you'd care to believe. And I would also point out that the composition of the Supreme Court is not the same that denied cert in the Highland Park case. So, I would say that the village would be well-behaved to actually worry about the infrastructure of the village and spend the money on that, rather than tilting out windmills, very expensive legal windmills, with the opportunity of losing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mathias Kowalik. Same address, Jerry.
Can you hear me correctly?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Mathias Kowalik. I live on 1111 Ostroman Avenue, Deerfield. I am a sophomore of Deerfield High School. I feel very, I don't really fear, like, people coming to my school and want to hurt students, because I know police and security are doing their best to protect us. And I really appreciate that. But I really want, try to stop. Well, I really like, well, my point is, I don't want guns to be banned. And I wanted to help people, too, because I know people just want to hurt. Well, I know I want to help people, because I wanted to help students if there is someone who wants to hurt people. And students just want to make sure that they want to hear their voices heard. And I want people to hear my voice, too, because I want to present my opinions. I know that you're trying to do the right, try to do the right thing, but I feel like this is, like, really doing the right thing, because we need, because the Second Amendment says we have the rights to bear arms, because we have the right to protect ourselves. And I want, I want to protect myself, too. And I want to help others, too. And I hope this thing, I hope this doesn't really affect the board or anyone else who knows about me. And I hope you, I hope you understand. And I hope you make a good, make good decisions about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Your attitudes toward helping other people are very admirable, Mathias. I want to say that.
Good evening, board and other speakers. My name is Cecilia Kowalik. I live at 1111 Ostroman Avenue. I'm in ninth grade at a private school in Des Plaines. And I want to start off by saying that kids at Deerfield High School who are agitated for this proposed ordinance do not represent all students, and they certainly do not represent me and my peers. I have an older brother that goes to Deerfield High School, and not once have I been in fear for myself or my older brother. I know that he is protected at his school, as well as am I. But I do fear you for attempting to take away my rights. And by setting more gun bans, we will only be putting ourselves in danger. Criminals don't follow the law. So what's gonna stop them from getting their hands on these guns? All too often, we forget that criminals don't play by the rules. They target places that there are a lot of people with little protection. How often do you hear about some messed-up person attacking a gun shop? Never. Well, on the other hand, schools are often the target of these kinds of people. Did you know that according to every town for gun safety's own data, ninety-two percent of all mass shootings were done in gun-free zones since 2009? These people don't attack others who are willing to fight fire with fire. These people are looking for populated groups with little to no protection. So this proposed ordinance will only serve to make us bigger targets and reduce the safety of the public in Deerfield. So rather than going through with this ordinance, we should just keep the present ordinance, no changes. And as Benjamin Franklin once said, "Those who are willing to give up essential liberties for temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Richard Beerman. I live at 914.
Lean toward the mic.
I'm at 914 Rose Lane, Wheeling, Illinois. I do not live in Deerfield, but I am rather disappointed when I see another northwest suburban area move to ban guns. I'm sorry that Mayor Rosenthal is not in attendance this evening. I'm sure she's rather disappointed in not being able to be here tonight to vote on such a big gun ban. So, the reason I'm, well, one of the many reasons I'm so opposed to banning guns, in addition to violating the Second Amendment of our Constitution, there seems to be a very harsh reactionary move by the news media, the activists, and politicians in our country whenever we have a major incident like the one in Parkland, Florida. It should be noted, however, that what you call assault rifles, which are simply semi-automatic, modern sporting rifles, are used in about three percent of all gun-related homicides in the country. A very small minority of homicides. So one major concern is that the next step in the process across the country is that after subsequent shootings, there's gonna be a move to ban all guns. Eighty percent of the homicides are, use a handgun. And you, however, have not chosen to ban handguns. You're banning the guns that are used in only three percent of the homicides, which is curious. After, after one of these shootings, we see a lot of hysterical news media attention to the minute details of, you know, hundreds of pictures of the shooter, giving the shooter the attention and fame that they crave, encouraging the next shooter to do the same thing, pushing governments to put up more of the little stickers in the windows that, to the next gun, mass shooter. Those stickers say nothing more than, "Have your shooting spree here." Because, like the last speaker, ninety-eight percent of these mass shootings are being done in what? A gun-free zone. In fact, more homicides are committed every year in this country with fists, feet, and blunt objects. However, there is no agenda to be pushed by the media with these kind of murders. There are no activists, no moves to regulate fists, feet, or blunt objects. No politicians trying to make new laws just so that they can do something. I think if they were to do that, they would be laughed out of office. About, probably ten times the number of deaths occur every year due to drownings. However, there is no movement, no mass hysteria by the media, no movement by activists or politicians to fill in the swimming pools or ban swimming. I think if there were, they would be laughed out of office. What if, on a single day in this country, we turned on the news and there were six hundred and eighty people shot and killed with an AR-15? What kind of news coverage would that get? I think we could imagine how intense it would be. Day after day, week after week, we would hear about it years after the fact. What if, instead of six hundred and eighty people in one day, it was every single day of the year, on average? We do have one cause of death for an average of six hundred and eighty people each and every day of the year, year after year after year. And that is due to medical mistakes. If those same deaths were being done by an AR-15, what would the media coverage be like? Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Marwick, 442 Calburn. As you can probably see, I just got back from one of those icky red states. A state where gun shows, guns are traded without any state-required background checks, where there's no FOID card, no registration required, no reporting to the police if your gun is lost or stolen. Open carry is basically unrestricted in Arizona. And the Wyatt Earp, Doc Holliday, O.K. Correll mentality that still pervades that state today doesn't make me feel the least bit safe. For example, two blocks from where I am in Phoenix, a father, just before Christmas, came to pick up his two children in a custody case, pulled out a gunshot, and killed his wife, ex-wife, in the parking lot, went into the apartment, killed his two children, and had about an eight-hour standoff with the police. There was another shooter that killed nine to eleven people. Finally, when he killed his mother and father-in-law, the Phoenix police put a stop to it. Having guns around doesn't make you feel safe. Another thing is, here's a bottle of flavored water, here's a tube of toothpaste, Crest toothpaste, and a jar of peanut butter. If I was to try to take these through a security checkpoint to go on an airplane, I would be treated like a criminal, and these items would be confiscated. And yet, the number of people in this country killed every day in homicide, suicides, and accidents with firearms is the equivalent of a 737 being destroyed by terrorists. Fully loaded 737, every day. Billions are spent on the TSA, and yet jurisdictions all over this country do absolutely nothing to stop the, and write legislation. So all this, oh, we have to take this away at the airport checkpoint, that away at the airport checkpoint. And yet, you have all these gun homicides and accidents. And like Governor Ducey in the Arizona Legislature are good examples of jurisdictions that do absolutely nothing to control the gun situation. Oh, the Constitution mentions a well-regulated militia. Then in order to have a well-regulated militia, well, Deerfield has a very well-regulated militia. We have a police chief, we have commanders, we have captains, we have lieutenants, sergeants, detectives, patrolmen. That sounds like a very well-regulated militia to me. So we have that right now. Another item is, in 1787, you had to reload a gun by hand. It took about a minute to reload a gun. Today, there's a dizzying array of weapons, high-capacity, high-velocity, armor-piercing, anti-aircraft, anti-tank, et cetera, et cetera. A line has to be drawn somewhere. Anti-aircraft weapons aren't allowed. Anti-tank weapons aren't allowed. Armor-piercing bullets aren't allowed. And I think that this is a very clearly, the assault weapons with hundreds of round magazines clearly are over that line. Guns don't make a country safer. I mean, if you look at this in Japan, the fewest guns, the most restrictions, the safest country in the world are one of the safest countries in the world. Europe, and then Canada and the United States progressively, as you get more and more guns, you get more and more people killed with guns in accidents, homicides, suicides. It's almost a straight-line correlation. Another item is someone mentioned that you need these assault weapons to go hunting. Well, I'm sorry. If you can't hit a deer with the first ten shots, I don't think you have any business going hunting. And for those who don't like Deerfield's assault weapons ban, you can take your assault weapons and go to Arizona for the next six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Murphy. Murray, sorry. Difficult to read this.
I also spoke last meeting, but I'd like to speak again if it's possible.
Your address, please.
The last time I was up here.
Your address, please.
I'm sorry. 3843 West 82nd Place, Chicago, Illinois. I'm up here because I'm sick and tired of every time some nut goes into a school and shoots however many people, how many adults, the first thing that happens is, "We gotta go after the guns." I'm done. Enough with the guns. Several people here have talked about mental health issues. Go for it. I'm all for it. But that's not why I'm, my list is up here. One of the things that really drives me crazy is the definition of words. Nobody seems to have touched tonight about the two words, semi-automatic and automatic. Semi-automatic, when I was in the military, said, "One pull of the trigger meant one round or bullet fired." Automatic meant one pull of the trigger, and when you hold it down, the magazine is emptied. Okay? The M16 was a hybrid weapon. You had both of those things. So it could go semi-automatic or automatic. Okay? Machine guns, by the way, are illegal in Illinois without, I believe, a special permit. The second thing is, crime and criminals are moving northward. You know, right up, right up, right up toward Deerfield. You guys are right in the path. Oak Brook had a carjacking the other, you know, recently. Okay? Chicago's northern neighborhoods were safe, like Logan Square. They're now targets of criminals. So they're moving northward. They're going where the money goes, where the property is, where nicer homes are, where people are disarmed. And lastly, again, my fear. First, to pick up all the rifles, or they'll pick up all the rifles, in the interest of public safety, of course. Then, all the shotguns, in the interest of public safety, of course. And then lastly, they'll pick up all the pistols, because, well, you know, you may wind up, you know, hurting yourself, you know, cleaning your gun, you know, you may shoot your mother, shoot your sister, whatever. If you pass this ordinance, and I hope and pray this does not happen, and the crime rate goes up, because crime rates do go up whenever, whenever, you know, things like this happen, tend to happen, I hope you have a contingency plan for your careers. And I mean this in jest, because you may not get re-elected to be sitting behind there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex Cogan, 1268 South Christian Vernon Hills. The reason I'm here is because, as gentlemen said before, the crime rate keeps going north. Chicago, just lose Chicago. Chicago has banned what you call assault weapons, which are semi-automatic rifles, and the crime is still going through the roof. There is nothing they can stop. They have restrictions on other firearms, and the crime still goes up. This is a problem that has to be dealt at a different level, not the guns at the education level. level. I'm a firearm instructor. I am trained by people that train our FBI services, CIA services, and our Marine Corps. I have pleasure of teaching kids, female and male. There is nothing better than having a child or having an adult take through the class and educate them properly, on a proper use of firearm, on a dangerous firearm, what to do and what not to do. Most people that have kids send their kids to other people's houses, and they have no clue what is going on. Their kids are not educated. San Antonio Police Department, a few years back, did a study where they took a bunch of kids, kids that were exposed to training, and kids that weren't exposed to training. And the kids that weren't exposed to training, when they found the firearm that was specifically planned by police department, which was, make sure that it wasn't functional, started playing with it. The kids that were trained by parents and other instructors, when they found the firearm, they went and they called the adults. You can verify it with San Antonio Police Department. Educating people is what will solve the problem, not a ban that has been proven that will not work anywhere.
Thank you. Ariella Karish.
A lot of different issues have been...
Name an address first.
Oh, sorry. Ariella Karish, 1420 North Avenue, Bannockburn.
Thank you.
A lot of different issues have been brought up at this point, mental health, education. Go for it, please. But what's on the docket today is a weapon, or an ordinance to ban assault rifles. That's what we have to focus on today. I'm for everything we can possibly do to try and solve this issue, but what's happening here today is this ordinance. On February 14th, we all know what happened in Parkland. On March 14th, an estimated 560 students from the school a mile to the left, Deerfield High School, walked out in solidarity with those students, not just the ones who died, but the ones who are now fighting in their name. An estimated 60 of those students marched that one mile all the way here, because this is, you are, our local government. And about 40 other community members who don't go to the high school are older than us, not in our generation, met us here, including Mayor Rosenthal, with open arms. Thank you for opening your arms, and please keep them open. An estimated 800,000 people protested on DC. Our politics is local. Where did they come from? Some of them came from here, and this bill is coming from here. It came from here about four years ago, too. You had an opportunity then. I said that before, standing right here. This is your second opportunity, and I really, truly believe you have to not let it pass you by. Andrew Tobin and Zoe Richardson are here with me in the back. They're students who also go to Deerfield High School. They spoke at the last meeting. I'm 18. I voted for the first time in the primary. So did Andrew Tobin. So did a lot of our friends at Deerfield High School. So did a lot of our friends who are 18 at other public high schools, because this is our fight. This is our generation's fight, and we're going to keep fighting, and this is part of it. So thank you for being a part of that. Deerfield does not yet have a quote-unquote "gun problem." None of the gun owners in Deerfield have caused anywhere close to an semblance of harm to the community in a public way. But Deerfield is a place of privilege. The geographical and socioeconomic space this village inhabits provides our lives with more ease than the majority of our nation, and quite frankly, the majority of the world. I don't say that in an attempt to share our community, but instead to instill in ourselves a sense of the role we play in this. My fellow students and I did not get involved until Parkland, an instance of violence that resonated as having occurred in a very similar community to Deerfield. My fellow students and I have also lived 30 minutes away from Chicago for our entire lives, a far more impacted community of gun violence. You have taken notice, as many have, for the same reason that we did. Change happens gradually, step by step. As a community of privilege, it is not only essential for us to contribute to the change legally, as this amendment would do, but also to recognize that the fight does not end at the borders of our village, at the borders of Deerfield, at the steps of this village hall. Thank you for helping lead the fight. It makes me proud to be from Deerfield. As a response to comments made, again, students are voting. We're proud to be voting, and we're going to continue to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a comment made earlier, much earlier in these statements, that high school students don't vote. I know better. I think most all of us do, and I'm pleased that they are getting involved on whichever side. Bob Morgan.
Good evening. Bob Morgan. I live at 520 Pine Street in Deerfield, Illinois. I'm also a candidate for state representative here in this community in Deerfield, in Highland Park. I've spoken before, so I'll make this very brief. I wanted to thank again the board for the time, the energy, and the time to listen to everyone in this community and people surrounding this community about the reasons why they support or the reasons they oppose this. I continue to strongly support this action. We're not going to change hearts and minds here tonight, or at the last meeting, or the meeting before, but this is not about changing hearts and minds. This is about improving the safety of our community. This is about improving the safety of the lives of our children, of my children. So again, thank you. And as we get to this vote here in just a few minutes, I do want to implore everybody on the board, as well as people in this room, there's a lot of energy here tonight for and against this resolution and ordinance, but there's so much more to do, so much more that we can do as a community, to deal with mental health, to deal with education, to do things that need to be done to make our community even more safe. So I hope that this is not the last time that we discuss this issue and other issues that can protect everybody in this community. So again, thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Bob. Eric Carlson. No? Mitch Shore.
Mitchell Shore, 920 King Richard's Court. I know I'm only supposed to talk on one thing, but a quick thank you to the police department and the chief for patrolling around Caruso. It's gotten better. It's still bad, but it has gotten better, but they have been there, so thank you. I'm sure most of you know my views on the ordinance, and I'm opposed to it. I just want to clear up some misinformation from two weeks ago. A resident and mother spoke about an AR is more powerful and it should not be allowed. I have done over 40 FBI ballistic protocol gelatin tests, and I can stand here and tell you that is absolutely false. I would be happy to show and discuss the ballistics of the 556 versus the pistol rounds that police officers carry. The pistol round penetrates more than the AR. I also ask that retired police officers be exempt from the ban. I thank you and appreciate that you amended the ordinance. I would also like to ask if maybe you would consider adding Illinois concealed carry holders. Nationwide, less than 1/2 of 1% of CCL holders have had their CCL revoked for criminal reasons. There's a sign on the door of this building that says you can't come in with your handgun if you're a concealed carry holder. I would almost guarantee that 100% of the holders follow that part of the law. How many criminals or people intend on doing harm would abide by that sign? Two weeks ago, with students, and by the way, I applaud all these students for doing, you know, their organizing and marching and protesting. I applaud that. I just wonder if the administration at the school and the teachers and everything else would allow students that maybe wanted to do a pro-life march, if they would be allowed the same freedoms and choices and be able to walk out of classes that they were allowed for this. Two weeks ago, a student said there were armed guards in the school, and it would be hard for her to concentrate on learning. It would be a distraction. I was in Israel 20 years ago with my kids, who were 13 and 11 at the time. We were standing in a food court in Tel Aviv, and three Israeli soldiers were in front of us with their M16s. Because my familiarity with the guns they had, and I was talking to them about the rifles and accessories, my kids were not scared, startled, or frightened by the three soldiers in front of us at McDonald's. What is the most precious thing to most of us, if not all of us? Children. While my kids are no longer at Deerfield High School, if they would, I would be afraid every day they went to school of something bad happening to them. But passing this ordinance will not alleviate my fear of any child being harmed. After 911, security at airports in many places changed. Why not at all schools? We need to make schools hard targets. That's a way to keep children safer. I'm not going to get into the Second Amendment. Heller and McDonald, it was the first time in the history of the Supreme Court that they heard a Second Amendment case, and the court ruled that it is an individual right. Okay? And like it or not, it's the law of the land. Roe versus Wade is the law of the land. Some people like it, some don't. Okay? Some here agree with former Justice Stevens that we should abolish the Second Amendment, that when it was written, we did not have assault weapons. Well, I guess we should only be allowed to carry muskets, because that's all they had when the law was written. Well, we didn't have the internet, we didn't have Facebook, and we didn't have Twitter. But because of our First Amendment, I can stand here and talk about the Second. I am pro-choice on firearms. Ownership. Give me the choice to choose what gun or guns I want to use to protect my home and my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Noon. Tim Sweeney. Jason Hill. Those are the names that we have on the list. Are there people who have come in for this particular item? Yes, sir.
I'm one of those who'd like to speak down.
Please do now. Name an address when you come up. And a five-minute limit.
My name is Art Ellingson. My address is post office box 2 in Arlington Heights. I use a post office box because I have an order of protection against a stalker that's been stalking me since 2005. So I beg your forbearance from that. If you want my address privately, I can give it to you later. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I know the difference between an AR-15 and an M16. Some people say they're similar. Well, they're similar like two red Mustang convertibles. They both are colored red, they both have convertible tops, they both have five-speed automatic, five-speed stick-shift transmissions. But one has a four-banger under the hood, and one has a 428 cubic inch fuel-injected V8 under the hood. They're not even close to the same. And also, AR stands for, in the AR-15, it doesn't stand for Assault Rifle, it stands for Armalite Rifle. Armalite is the company that invented and first manufactured the AR-15. And then they modified it slightly to make the M16 for the government. But AR does not stand for Assault Rifle, it stands for Armalite Rifle. Now, I have a few pictures I'd show you if I could. One is a bunch of medals from Korea and Vietnam, and one is a headline of what the gentleman just talked about, that students at Parkland are now coming forward to saying that the famous students don't speak for all of us, all the students don't agree. Because this is an issue that so many left-wing liberals have backwards. If I had time and permission, I could sit down at a computer and put the information into a chart to show that there is a correlation between gun restriction laws and more gun deaths. Chicago is a prime example of that. You have lots of gun restriction laws, and you have more gun deaths. If you criminalize guns, only criminals will have guns. Now, what if I'm on my way to the VA hospital up at Lovell, up by the Great Lakes Navy Base from Arlington Heights, I'm driving through on the tollway, and I have a flat tire? Am I going to get arrested because, oops, am I going to get arrested because I have a rifle in my trunk, but I'm technically inside the city limits of Deerfield? I don't know the answer to that. But I do know this. In Colorado, there were 17 theaters a couple of years ago, and 16 of those theaters had no signs up banning weapons. One in 17 theaters had a sign up that said, "No guns allowed." And that's where the shooting happened a couple of years ago in Colorado Springs. Because people who are intent on causing damage, they go to the places that are, have targets that can't shoot back. Now, the Sunday morning following the shooting at Columbine High School, our youth pastor, who is from Montana, told us that there'd never be a shooting in Montana, because every 16-year-old boy is expected to have his gun with him on the, at the school bus in the morning, loaded, ready to protect the little kids from getting picked off by mountain lions. And every 16-year-old boy in Montana has a gun rack in his locker. And the rule in Montana, according to our youth pastor, was, "Please unload your gun before you come into school." But every junior and senior, every 16-year-old with a hunting license in Montana has a gun, a rifle that can bring down a deer or a mountain lion, and his ammo. Now, tell me, if you know of 25 16-year-olds in a school who have their .30.6 with them, tell me if there's going to be a school shooting there. No, there isn't. That's why there's never been a shooting in Montana. Criminals pick soft targets. I used to be a member of a liberal church that in 2009 voted to say it was okay to be gay. And when the gun ordinance came out in Chicago, that church decided, "We're going to put signs up to ban guns." And everybody was all excited about that, because when the new concealed carry ordinance came out, they gave churches the right to put the signs up. And then one guy said, "I'm your insurance agent. If you put those signs up, we're going to double or triple your insurance rates." Because it's more dangerous to have those signs up than to not have the signs up. And that church, to this day, doesn't have those signs up. Now, if you look at my little badge here, I've been almost every day, I mean, I work as an election judge in that church, in the basement, on election day, I've been counting votes ever since. But I understand the rules with this. And that church still has no signs up, because they know it's a soft target. And creating more gun laws will only create more gun deaths in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further... Yes.
Hello. My name was on the sheet, but I guess let's get past it.
What was your name?
Stephen Nagy, with a P-H. I live in 1304 Kenton Road. First of all, I want to say thank you on behalf of students that aren't here. It's our spring break, so a lot of students are away, but thank you on behalf of the students that aren't here. Thank you for myself, for taking the time to look at this. These weapons aren't necessary here in Deerfield or in any place. They aren't necessary. They don't make life easier for any civilians, and there's certainly no use for them here. These objects are meant for enjoyment. They're for those who are law-abiding to have fun with them, and they are meant for those who have malice in mind for destruction. And the real goal here is not to publicly go against law-abiding citizens and go against them, it's to stop people from being able to steal their weapons, or from people who aren't law-abiding, from using these weapons to go into somewhere that where students are, where children are, where, any public places, from going there and wreaking havoc. And I'd also like to point out that, yes, our school is extremely safe. This Deerfield is an extremely safe place. I feel safe going to school, but the back of my mind, that doesn't mean that there isn't some, that there isn't the possibility that someone could come into our school and could, for whatever reason, pull out an assault weapon and go into our school and kill how many ever, how many ever people. And our representative, Brad Schneider, he said this. He said, "We have a responsibility to protect our children and communities, and military-style assault weapons have no place in our society. I support a federal ban on the sale of these deadly weapons. While the federal government has refused to act, I am heartened by the municipalities across the country, including Deerfield, that are stepping forward to keep assault weapons out of our communities." That was said by Brad Schneider. And Dick Durbin, the minority whip in our Senate...
Please.
Sorry.
Pay attention.
He said, "What in the world is the civilian purpose of these guns?" And the answer is, "There are no civilian purposes." Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there is no... Yes.
My name is Edmund Dunn. I live at 1119 Ragoe Avenue. I'd like to remind everyone of several Supreme Court cases. One is Warren versus the District of Columbia, which upheld police do not have a specific duty to provide police services to individual citizens, which we saw in Parkland, Florida on many levels with... we saw in Parkland, Florida, on many levels, with local, state, and federal agencies. Also is Heller versus the District of Columbia, which upheld the individual right to bear arms, and it also upheld the right to commonly-used firearms. I'd also remind everyone that the Illinois State Constitution, under the Illinois State Militia, the State Militia consists of all able-bodied persons residing in the state, except those exempted by law. So anyone here who says there is no State Militia of ordinary citizens, you are fooling yourselves. I'd also like to talk about assault weapons. Assault weapons is a made-up term by the media and the liberal left. Assault rifles, on the other hand, are real and have selectable fire, either semi-automatic and three-round burst, or semi-automatic and automatic fire. Those are heavily regulated under the National Firearms Act of 1934, which are available for purchase but are extremely expensive. Also, the notion of high-capacity magazines is also a made-up term by the media and the liberal left. Most standard magazines that you folks call high-capacity are 30-round magazines for an AR-15, or over 10 rounds for any type of pistol. If you take any pistol off the shelf that is not a pocket pistol, it carries more than 10 rounds. Those are standard magazines, unless you're in California. I'd also like to remind everyone that we live in a very affluent town here, which I like to tell my wife is called the Deerfield Bubble. When you leave here, you enter the real world. Everything in Deerfield may be hunky-dory and sweet and, and nice, but the real world is not that way. And when you eliminate the folks to carry firearms and execute their God-given rights, you are infringing upon them. What I don't understand is, this proposed ban does not make children safer at the high school. How does banning rifles that carry more than 10 rounds save children at the high school? People who intend to do harm do not follow laws. The last time I checked, murder is illegal. Carrying a firearm onto school property is illegal. This does not stop people who intend to do harm to others from doing it. I would like to finish with, you all are actively subverting our Constitution and our constitutional republic by infringing on the rights of every citizen in our great nation. And it seems to me that no one in this room has learned history of civilization, especially within the 20th century, where we've seen many socialist regimes confiscate firearms and commit mass murder of their citizens. We've seen it in China. We've seen it in Nazi Germany. We've seen it in North Korea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes... One more?
Come on.
Come on.
Wait a minute. Again?
He spoke before.
Am I not allowed to? Because I said no earlier.
I beg your pardon?
Am I still allowed to, even though I said no earlier?
If, if you had been, if you had...
I just...
Put the microphone down, please.
My name's Andrew Tobin. I live at 841 Fox Hunt Trail, Deerfield. People have been having a lot of good, old-fashioned civic engagement here tonight. There have been some laughs in the audience. I'd just like to say that this isn't a laughing matter, and the people who are here are not trying to be here to laugh. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent comment.
How about if we call for the vote?
A bigger button?
How about if we call for the vote?
Is there, is there any comment or discussion from the board?
I, I do have one comment.
Go ahead.
I asked somebody who is on the same side as most of these people are, if he would come to the board meeting, and he said he would come to the board meeting to talk against this ordinance, except that he would be castigated by his neighbors if he showed up at the board. And I don't think that's a good idea either. I'm going to vote for the ordinance, but people who disagree with the gun owners should not be beating them over the head just because they disagree.
I would stress that any decisions that we make in this village hall about our citizens, about the businesses of the village, will not be unanimous, ever. And people have different viewpoints. And we recognize that, and we welcome them. And however this vote comes out, we respect those who are on each side. We are doing what we feel, or will do what we feel is best.
I'd like to move approval of the ordinance amending Chapter 15, Article 11, Section 1587 of the municipal code of the Village of Deerfield to regulate the possession, manufacture, and sale of assault weapons in the Village of Deerfield.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Jerry, are you back there?
Yes, I am. Trustee Seiden.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Trustee Struthers.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Jester.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Motion carries that ordinance will go into effect in mid-June, June 13th.
Kent, will you, will you speak to the, the change, the slight change in the effective date?
Well, the effective date, because it's an ordinance that institutes a fine, and because there's a...
Your, your, your mic is not working very well.
Okay, I'm going to speak really loud, whether the mic works or not. The ordinance goes into effect June 13th. What this has to do with, we publish ordinances for one day. There's 10 days, because there's a fine, and then the ordinance provides for a 60-day delay in that implementation. So all that works out to June 13th is when this ordinance will go into effect. Any questions?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. We appreciate your coming.
All right.
I, I don't know if there's time, I don't know if there's time to hear the end of the basketball game, but we have a good amount of business remaining, so we'd like to continue with it, if you'll be very quiet on the exit.
Okay, where are we on the agenda here?
We're back on the first appeal of the Appearance Review Commission. So we're going to go back to Agenda Item Number One.
AR, yeah.
There we go.
You would think we were banning all the guns.
Most of these people are from out of town anyway.
Camera guys, take your time. We'll do what you're going to do.
There are a lot of gun owners and assault rifle owners in Deerfield.
There are.
And now it will be. Or there still will be. There will be, but they're going to have to find a place to keep them.
Bob, you want to take a two?
We have a good, we have a good bit of business left to do. We'd like to get started doing it. I don't see anybody. Andrew, could you close the other door over there?
Close one of them. You gotta, you gotta let people in, so we can't...
Well, yeah, but that's the one to close.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the...